So, good evening. I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, November 19th, 2019. On behalf of the members of the school board and our superintendent, I welcome each of you, present or watching, our quorumists present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Dixie Elementary, Amaya Sprouse and Cody Shaw. First, Amaya will come forward and deliver the invocation. She will be followed by Cody, who will come forth and deliver the pledge. So, Amaya, please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before we get started.
I am Amaya Sprouse and I am from Roots and I am in fifth grade and I am in Ms. Rawls' class.
Awesome. Yep. Welcome. Welcome.
When I grow up, I want to be a math teacher.
Alright.
The Man Who Thinks He Can, poem adapted from Walter D. Wentz. If you think you are beaten, you are. If you think you dare not, you don't. If you like to win, but you don't think you can, it's almost certain that you won't. If you think you'll lose, you're lost. For out in the world, we find success begins in a fellow's will. It's all in the state of mind. If you think you're outclassed, you are. You've got to think high to rise. You've got to be sure of yourself before you can ever win the prize. Life battles don't always go to the strongest or faster man. Sooner or later, the man who wins is the one who thinks he can.
Outstanding. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
And Mr. Cody?
My name is Cody Shaw and I am from Ms. Holmes' class and my favorite subject is science.
Alright.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, let's give them both, Amaya and Cody, another round of applause. I see that we have, Amaya, you're going to make my school board member or vice chair very happy because of your science and, no, that's Cody. That's Cody. No, that's Cody.
Teacher.
Teacher. And then, we have a math specialist also on the board that, those who will be in math, you're going to make Mr. Brown very proud of you as well. So, we look for both of you possibly in our classrooms. If not there, at the academic or the higher level, at the college, at the university, or maybe where this young man is sitting right here. So, good luck. And supporting Amaya and Cody tonight are their family members and their school family. Please stand to be recognized. The board appreciates the encouragement that you have given these two students and, again, we thank you for bringing them out to our meeting tonight. So, again, let's give them one more hand of applause. Well done. Okay. So, our next stop, I believe it's, we're going to have our board recognitions. So, Dr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
I have the pleasure of presenting this month's recognitions. Ensuring that young people are financially literate is paramount to preparing them for future financial success. Our first recognition this evening illustrates the district's success in this area. Working in support of education, ORWIS, is an educational organization dedicated to building financial literacy, fostering business and social entrepreneurship, and preparing students for college and the global workplace. The organization's literacy certification program provides high school students with financial education and the opportunity to become certified financially literate. Students learn more about personal finance, then they take the ORWIS standardized Financial Literacy Certification Test. And our first honorees this evening have earned national recognition. As educators who teach the career and technical education course in personal finance, they are striving to ensure that their students develop the skills for lifelong successful financial decision-making. Twelve Newport News educators have earned and have been named 2018-2019 Gold Star Teachers. At least 93% of their students and at least one of their classes passed the ORWIS Financial Literacy Test, which is also a Board of Education-approved certification. They're joining us this evening. Please join us in congratulating, from Demby High School, Hope London. Also from Demby High School is Lisa McAllister, who's unable to join us this evening. From Heritage High School, Lanice Cowling. From Min trail High School, Adrian Caldwell. From Warwick High School, Michael Bellamy. And also Lisa Jones and Reginald Neely, who are unable to join us this evening. From Woodside High School, we have Janet Costello. And Tina Shorter. And Stephen Brown was also named, from Woodside. The Virginia Standards of Learning for Economics and Personal Finance require instruction in economic concepts, economic reasoning, decision-making, and problem-solving. Our high school students have to meet a state requirement to complete a one-credit economics and personal finance course prior to graduation, so this is very important. With the help of these dedicated educators, our students are not only satisfying a graduation requirement, they're also earning state and national certification. These dedicated educators were also recognized at the Money Power Conference for Financial Literacy in New York City earlier this month. Educators, thank you for equipping our students with the tools and the life skills they need to become college, career, and citizen-ready.
Stand up here for a picture.
Their family members, would you please stand to be recognized? We thank you for coming. And I'd also like to acknowledge their school administrators, Dr. Eleanor Blow, Ms. Shamika Gerald, Michelle Banks, Dr. Kelly Mason, and Dr. Wendy Nichols. And also, the division's CTE supervisor, Tonette Outland, and CTE specialist, Kristy Hopkins. Would you all please stand? Thank you. Thank you for your support. Our custodians are the caretakers of our schools and offices. They ensure that our buildings and the surrounding grounds are safe and clean. Our dedicated custodians ensure that repairs and maintenance are routinely addressed, and they work tirelessly to ensure the success of athletic events, student performances, meetings, and all of those special events that occur after school. In a school, they play an even greater role, for they, along with our other dedicated support staff members, are the key elements of a successful educational environment, as they contribute to the health, safety, attitude, and pride of our students. Each summer, the Custodial Services Department conducts its annual Cleanest School Campaign. School custodial teams are invited to participate in the contest to earn the Cleanest School Designation. A team of supervisors from Plant Services visits each participating school or worksite and randomly evaluates several classrooms, hallways, offices, and public spaces. They survey the areas expecting them to be dust-free, with shiny floors, clean carpet, pristine glass, and no apparent maintenance problems. After the results are tabulated, the award winners are announced, and this evening, we're recognizing the recipients of the 2019 Clean School Contest. Please join me in congratulating the team from Marshall Early Childhood Center, Lead Sharon Austin, also from Marshall. Congratulations to the team from Marshall. Our next winning team is from Sedgfield Elementary School. Let's congratulate Lead Custodian John Pickett. And Arturo McLendon. Another member of the team, Angela Goodwin, was unable to join us this evening, but we congratulate her as well.
We're going to ask her to take a picture too, all that hard work.
One more. Take a big picture.
That's the fun one at work.
In the secondary school category, an achievable dream middle and high school earned top honors. Please join us in congratulating Lead Custodian Dr. Mason. And Derek Ward. We also want to recognize Joyce Ferby and Timothy Radcliffe, who are unable to join us tonight.
Okay, you know, you gotta take a picture now.
Let's congratulate Lead Custodian Tammy Davis. And Donald Page. We also want to acknowledge part of the heritage team unable to join us this evening, Peggy Adams, Darlene George, Siobhan Gray, Ernest Johnson, Shirley Jones, and Samuel Smith. Congratulations to them as well.
Third time?
Why do you do this all the time?
They keep our schools safe and clean and they're an important part of the team that supports and assists our students and our staff every day. So, we thank you for your commitment and for earning this recognition. Joining them tonight are members of their families and their friends, their principals. I think we have Ms. Keller, Ms. Cox, Sinclair White, and Ms. Gerald. And I also want to acknowledge Marcia Bullock, who is our Custodial Services Supervisor. Would you all please stand and be acknowledged? Thank you so much. This week marks the annual observance of American Education Week, when school districts across the country celebrate and showcase public education. Our school district is commemorating American Education Week by focusing on our mission, ensuring that all students graduate college, career, and citizen-ready. Schools are hosting special events and hosting student showcases. Every day this week, schools are posting promotional messages and publicizing how our schools are becoming college, career, and citizen-ready, or our students. And they're using their social media, and we've asked all schools to use the hashtag #NNPSProud. So, if you want to check out how well we're doing, please search #NNPSProud on social media. We invite and we thank our family members, PTAs, and our booster clubs for joining in this annual event and promoting all that's going well in our schools. Again, congratulations to all of our honorees this evening. This concludes a recognition portion of our meeting. At this time, we'll take about a seven-minute break, because that's about how long the school board spotlight is. So, our honorees and their families may leave if you choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about seven minutes.
Veterans Day gives students a chance to honor the men and women who have served in the United States Armed Forces. November is also Military Family Appreciation Month, which recognizes the sacrifices families make for our great country. At Greenwood Elementary, veterans were honored at a breakfast provided by Coloshan Baptist Church and the school's PTA. Principal Kamisha Davis, the wife of a Navy veteran, was joined by students who expressed their heartfelt gratitude to the brave men and women. With handmade banners and American flags waving, the entire school celebrated our military during a patriotic parade. And a few brave veterans made time to talk to classes about their careers and life experiences serving in the military. Dozier Middle School spent an entire morning honoring veterans, including educators who have served in the military. Cadets from Warwick High School's Junior ROTC led a parade through the hallways so students could express their gratitude. During breakfast, the servicemen and women enjoyed performances from Dozier's chorus, orchestra, and band. And Demby's JROTC cadets shared their experiences as they prepare to lead the next generation of soldiers. To all veterans, thank you for your unwavering dedication and extraordinary sacrifices to ensure our country's freedoms. This school year, Cyber Steam programs are being introduced to seven Newport News schools, thanks to a generous grant awarded through the Department of Defense Education Activity. By integrating science, technology, engineering, and math with the creativity of art, students will enjoy an expanded curriculum focused on coding, robotics, and game-based cybersecurity. Sixty elementary and middle school students were invited to experience a sneak peek during Cyber Steam Summer Camp. At Kiln Creek Elementary, the week-long camp was designed around the Virginia Department of Education's computer science standards. Each day, students earned badge flags as they mastered skills in robotics, cybersecurity, and coding. Collaborative games, interactive lessons, and hands-on learning experiences made the comprehensive introduction fun and practical. STEM instructional specialist Jennifer Barker designed the camp curriculum and trained classroom teachers and instructional technology coaches to offer this brand-new summer experience. Through Cyber Steam Summer Camp, students gain career readiness skills in one of the fastest-growing career fields, while expanding their computational thinking and digital literacy. Life is a journey, not a destination, and the Newport News Public Schools Transportation Team is focused on making each student's ride to and from school a little greener. Propane is an emission-reducing, cost-effective alternative fuel, and Newport News Public Schools is at the forefront of a national trend to offer students a cleaner, quieter, and more enjoyable bus ride. During the third full week of October, the NMPS Transportation Team combined two milestones into one worthy celebration. First, National School Bus Safety Week was an opportunity to recognize the 484 drivers, maintenance workers, and support staff that ensure a safe ride to school every day. Second, Bluebird Corporation recently delivered their 15,000th propane bus. Newport News Public Schools was the proud recipient. With a fleet of 335 buses, 71 are now propane-powered, steadily replacing the aging diesel-guzzling vehicles. Transportation employees, school administrators, elected officials, and industry partners gathered at the brand-new transportation facility to celebrate both occasions. The benefits of a propane bus include cost savings for maintenance and fuel, along with environmental advantages, earning the school system a Clean Energy Innovation Award. A quieter ride puts less stress on the young minds preparing to learn, and studies have proven that students perform better in school after riding a propane bus. With the largest school bus fleet of propane-powered vehicles in the state of Virginia, the NMPS Transportation Team is excited to play a role in lowering harmful emissions and raising A popular training method for runners is called repeats, and that's just what happened at this year's All-City Middle School Championship Track Meet. Washington's Girls and Gildersleeves Boys kept in stride after winning last year's championship titles to bring home the trophies once again. Held at Todd Stadium, the 11th Annual Middle School Championship brought all eight middle schools together for the final track meet of the season. Teams earned points through five individual races and two relay events. There were also four unscored races for sixth graders only. Washington's Girls Team, coached by Harold Roach, ran away with this year's title, which is their third championship in a row. Top finishes in the 1,600-meter run, 4x100-meter relay, 800-run, 200-dash, and 4x400 relay helped the Bay Savers continue an impressive streak of five titles in the last six years. After winning the citywide championship for the first time last year, Gildersleeves Boys were eager to taste victory again. Coach and PE teacher Susan McAuliffe was proud of the team's performance, with top finishes in the 100-meter dash, 1,600-meter run, 4x100 relay, and 800-run ceiling, a repeat win for the Seahawks. Running track at the middle school level is a fun and rewarding experience for the student athletes, with many keeping pace into high school and beyond.
Welcome back and hope you enjoyed the school board spotlight. At this time during our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and also toward the end of the meeting. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we consider your concerns, or we'll get back with you at a later time. Please comply with our three-minute limit. As you begin, the green light comes on. A yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining. A red light in the beep indicates that your time is up, and we will ask that you would bring your comments to a conclusion. So, at this time, we do have some cards, so as you hear your name, please come forward. Tonight, we have a former school board member and school board chair, John McMillan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You took half of my introduction. I am John McMillan and I live at 43 Ridgewood Parkway, up in the Demby section of the city. Neighbor from right down the street. First, let me apologize for my voice. I'm fighting a head cold or a head something. I've got a head for sale, so. As was stated, I have served two terms on this board, the last two years of which I was the chair. was the chair. It's been a long time since I last spoke to the board as a citizen, and an even longer time since I came to complain about something. But first, let me congratulate Mrs. Simons on her election to the General Assembly. I look forward to watching you grow in this new position and working with you on some issues of concern for the Peninsula. So congratulations. Secondly, a week or so before this most recent election, I was pointed to a Facebook post of a fundraiser for one of the candidates in a local race, and I was surprised to see at least one board member, one member of the school board in attendance. Didn't bother me that you were there, but it kind of caught my attention. Even more surprising was the statement by that member that, and I quote, "On behalf of the entire Newport News School Board," end quote, he could guarantee seven votes. Certainly, I have no expectation that board members, individual board members, would need to refrain from election activities. You're an individual, you're a voter, you have that right. However, I do expect that our school board as a whole should refrain from involvement in campaign or even activities that might give the appearance of the board's support for one candidate over another. Even your own policy, Policy BC, School Board Member Conduct, states that, and again I quote, "Board members will not use their status as school board members in any other than official school board business situations." I tried to read that slowly, so I didn't mess it up. You've got plenty of work to do, as I'm sure you know, just on the school system itself. Please don't spend time trying to decide how to get a consensus on a candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, next, we do have some more cards. Michelle Norton?
Hi, hello, everybody. My name is Michelle Nordean, and I'm the Yates PTA president, and I'm also the parent of two children who attend Yates Elementary. I'm just here because I was here last month telling you about our concerns about the playgrounds at Yates, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention again, because our children are still having inadequate playgrounds. We, like I said, I'll tell you the numbers again, we have 63 kindergartners, and the playground that they currently have is built for about 23 to 28. I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but it was in the 20s. We have 104 fifth graders, and they have a playground that is the exact same size as the lower hall playground, the lower hall playgrounds. I just wanted to say, the PTAs, me, as the PTA president, we are willing to work with you guys. If you guys can help us come up with a solution, do we, you know, we're looking for anything, any help that we can get to improve our playgrounds. I just wanted to bring it to your attention again, and congratulate Ms. Simons again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Charles Williams.
Hey, y'all. Thanks for having me. This is actually my first school board meeting, and everybody was so happy earlier. It's kind of fun to see that. Thank you for what all you do. I'm a local pediatrician, so I see lots of patients of Newport News school kids, and I get to see firsthand the effect that you have on kids, so I just wanted to say thank you, first of all. So like I said, my name's Trey Williams. Trey is what I go by, Charles is my legal name, but I'm a local pediatrician. I'm here to just express my concerns over the management of concussions in Newport News Public Schools. Over the past month, I've had several patients present after closed head injuries, after seemingly minor trauma, and these families have described me a very onerous and difficult process and getting support in schools, so I'm here to advocate on their behalf. As you're aware, there's over 26,000 students in the Newport News Public Schools being educated, and a third of them, over 7,000, over 7,500 are in high school, ninth to 12th grade. One out of every five U.S. adolescents, that's 20%, eighth grade and up, reported at least one concussion in their lifetime, which is a significant number, and one out of every 20 reported more than one. Of these, anywhere from 30 to 80% will experience what we call post-concussion syndrome. Applying those percentages to local schools, over 1,500 of your patients have reported a concussion or will have reported a concussion, with over 400 having more than one. And of those, 451 have had post-concussion syndrome. Post-concussion syndrome, PCS, are greatest within the first seven to 10 days, usually headache, dizziness, some neuropsychiatric symptoms, sometimes cognitive impairment that's pretty common. But most of these kids don't improve within the first week. It can take a month to three months for these kids to get better, so it's a significant short-term disability. And for those people that play sports, roughly 10% of sports-related injuries are concussions. For those that don't play sports, which are the kids that often get missed with concussions, the numbers are kind of hard to find out, but it still happens, especially with recreational activities. The problem is that there's clearly an issue with concussion management in Newport News Schools, and that isn't standardized, and I think we need to address that, and I think the place to bring it is here. I'm going to give you a little story about a patient of mine. On October 9th, and I had her permission to share this, 16-year-old student presented to my clinic with a head injury. She was in gym class and was quote-unquote tackled by playing flag football. Seemingly minor trauma, but she clearly had a concussion, a rather severe concussion, using a standardized tool that we use to diagnose it. Provided her a letter to give the school, as well as outlining the protocol, which is a very standard for what we do, and followed her up weekly, which is kind of the standard of practice for concussion management in the outpatient clinic. Over the next few weeks, I asked her, hey, get in touch with the school, have you gotten a meeting with the folks at Menchville? And no response, according to the family, and I actually reached out to the school several times and got no call back. It took them over five weeks to actually schedule a meeting with the family, which is just horrible. I mean, that's just inappropriate. Five weeks for a child that had a very severe head injury is just not okay. I was very clear in my documentation in regards to her recovery being slow and the need for the school to allow accommodations, but it just didn't happen. So my questions I wanted to pose in closing are: What standardized process or protocol is in place in Newport News Schools to help manage concussions and post-concussive syndrome in student athletes and non-athletes, which is really important? What training has been provided, if any, to teachers and administrators regarding concussions and their management? And finally, how can we improve the communication between providers and teachers in regards to short-term disabling conditions such as concussions or other conditions that might impair school attendance and function? Thank you.
Could you leave those remarks? Do you have them written down?
I haven't typed up. Absolutely.
Okay. Next, we have Ms. Elizabeth Bessel.
Good evening. Yeah, hi, my name's Elizabeth Bessel. I have a son in the fourth grade at...
I'm sorry.
Should I go sit down? At Yates Elementary, and at the behest of our PTA president, Michelle, I decided to come tonight to also speak about the playground. My son waited till fourth grade to finally make it to play at the big kids' playground, and in third grade, when all the other classes got to play in the big kids' playground, his class got assigned to the little kids' playground. So this was the year, now that he's in fourth grade, to get to the big kids' playground. And as you've already heard, we got all-new program playgrounds, which are wholly inadequate, very disappointing. There's been a lot of confusion about who approved the playgrounds and how they came to be, and the plan for them, and by the time, I guess, people started realizing that as they were being installed, that they were wholly inadequate, it was supposedly too late because they were already approved, paid for, and in progress. So I'd like to understand who decided that, where the money came from, why the parental community wasn't included in the decision-making process. So just reiterating that. And I'm asking Michelle if I can partner with her to maybe put out a survey to our parents, because I know one of the biggest concerns is that two of us show up, and from your perspective, it doesn't look like the community is very upset about this. And what it is, really, and you all know this, is we're all very busy, and we don't have time to make these meetings. It's not our, it's not my first priority to come to a meeting on a Tuesday night. So I feel like if we do a survey and you get results from our parents and from our students, you'll see that this is a pretty big issue for the school. And then, if I have a couple extra minutes, the other thing, which actually I mentioned to Ms. Simons when she came to my house when she was campaigning, is recesses. It's pretty concerning to me, one, that they only get one recess. I grew up in upstate New York, and we got two recesses, an assigned recess, and we also got to go out at lunch after we finished eating. And then, secondly, I don't agree that young students should wait till 2:30 and 3 o'clock after a six-hour day to have their recess, and they're not even allowed to go out at lunchtime. We're making these young kids live a schedule or a routine that's designed for grown-ups or adults or high school students. So my child has had to go to recess at 2:30 and 3 o'clock. I know that there's a lot of juggling with classes and schedules, but I just consider that unacceptable, and we've had four years of it. So I think we need to revisit recesses for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Marion Temple.
Hello. So I spoke at the September school board meeting regarding some concerns with Warwick High School and their athletics and the baseball program. Dr. Parker did speak with me for about approximately 10 minutes after the meeting. However, in that, he stated that his concern was academics, but he would look into what my concerns were. However, there was no conversation past that regarding the exact incidents, the exact events, none of the emails that I had, none of the information that I had, none of the witnesses that I had. No information was collected. However, an investigation was completed, the second one, without proper investigation, proper witnesses to the incidents that I had expressed. And then, two weeks after that, I see that that was when, there was one article about you, I can't exactly figure out what it was, but then there was the other article about the graduation rate, and it just appeared that, it seemed like the media was, and the numbers were more important than the situations that were happening outside of that. And then, in the certified letter that you sent me, you stated that you did your investigation, that you did find that the school did not handle things appropriately regarding my concerns of months of bringing it to the attention of the principals, principal assistant principal, athletic director, and you did acknowledge that they did not handle things appropriately. However, then you went on to say that you interviewed someone else who made a complaint, and they said that they were okay with the coach, so you were okay with the coach, which I don't feel, if one parent says they're okay, there shouldn't be an explanation for all the parents, just because that one parent is okay. I tried to contact you after that school board meeting in September. The letter I got from you actually came to me two days after the October meeting, so I didn't come. However, there's no way to contact you. The only way to address concerns is at a school board meeting, so when I came to the school board meeting in September, I couldn't contact you after to see if you were interested in getting any of my information to go along with your investigation. And I contacted Ms. Buffalo, and I gave her some information, however, none of it was used, and I was never able to speak with you. Then I get that letter, and it was very disturbing, and nothing was ever done past that, and there's no way to contact or rebuttal or get any information out aside from coming to the meeting. It's very disturbing that in your investigation, you concluded that it, you know, is the vulgar language, the demeaning was okay, but your biggest concern was me regarding a situation that you didn't even have all the facts about. And so I just wonder, if you all are going to do investigations, they should be clear, concise, the parents should be able to give witnesses, the parents should be able to give information, emails, dates, and everything to go with your investigation, because how can you do an investigation upon your own personal information? If the issue is with the school, why would you feel that their information was altogether when that's the issue, is that they didn't do it? And congratulations, Ms. Simons, and thank you for all of the help that you've given me regarding the situation. Unfortunately, hasn't been kind of conducive amongst everyone, but I do appreciate it, and I do congratulate you on your recent win. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pam Hall.
Good evening. My name is Pam Hall, and I live in the southeast community. I'm still here, trying to get funding for Huntington, no quid pro quo for funding for Huntington, no quid pro quo for the design for Huntington. We need to push the city council to give us the funding now, so that we can get those children in the school by the time limit set by Dr. Parker, and I thank you all for your help. Thank you.
Ms. Janie Basemore.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, and Mr. Superintendent. Of course, you know, my name is Janie Basemore. The constant inaction on the part of the city council where the issue of Huntington is stalled is causing us grave concern and begging us to ask the question of whether we must take the matter outside of the city and school board. We hesitated, thinking that the matter of Huntington would be resolved with our elected officials, but more and more, an expeditious and satisfactory resolution does not appear to be forthcoming. We came before you in December of 2016 with our objections to the closing of Huntington. We are thankful that certain plans were carried out to keep students under the umbrella of Huntington. While it is not the best circumstances, our students at Huntington at Heritage flourished. Huntington, in fact, had the highest algebra scores of all middle schools in the school division. But what happens in June of 2020? Unless some action is taken to bring in the sixth graders back to Huntington, Huntington will cease to exist. That is wholly and totally unacceptable with our community, and we do not intend to sit back and let this happen. We have asked you to consider bringing the zone sixth graders to Huntington at Heritage. We have not been given any indication as what your plans are, and nobody is talking. We will continue to ask that this school board and school division come up with a plan to keep Huntington as more than a school on paper. The closing of Huntington has and will continue to affect our middle school students in the way of overcrowding, which is detrimental to the academic success of our students. We realize that the rebuilding of the school itself is based on getting funding from the city, and that process is being held up because the city council is exploring other community assets to include as part of a campus concept. This was just reported in the Daily Press following the city's two-day retreat in Virginia Beach. Well, that's the money that could have been put towards education. Our city envisions this campus concept, but we and you, the experts on educational facilities, must strenuously reject the idea of our city council that would jeopardize the safety of our students in our school buildings. We cannot bring services that would allow the general public to be on the school campus during school hours. They are now even talking about organizations like the YMCA being on or near the campus. Okay, my time is up. We won't get it all done, but with the progress that is being made, the school could have been in the process of being built right now. So just think about that, and we thank you for your time, and Huntington shall rise again. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? There being none, we will move the agenda to item number three, our consent agenda. Item number 3.01, minutes from our regular meeting, October 15th, 2019. 3.02, minutes from our work session meeting, October 15th, 2019. 3.03, our financial records, revenue and expense reports, October 2019. Our child nutrition report, October 2019. 3.04, our personnel report. 3.05, resolution 2303, the site leases for the solar project within the school division. 3.06, our budget transfer. And 3.07, proposed 2019, 2020 calendar revisions. Can I have a motion for approval of the consent? Can I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
You heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You heard the motion, the second. Time for the question. Are there being none? Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mrs. Sewell's Law.
Four.
Dr. Best.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ealy.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Item number four, action items. There seem to be no items for action today. Then we'll move the agenda to item number five, reports and information. And first, we'll have is our legislative program, proposed fiscal year 20 legislative program. And here, to enlighten us, is Mr. Lynn Wallant.
Chairman Hunter, Dr. Parker, members of the board, good evening. Tonight's the first opportunity for public discussion of the upcoming General Assembly session and the legislative issues of importance to the board. The full draft of the legislative program has been posted online. The legislative program is the board's opportunity to convey its key issues for the 2020 legislative session. During the session, of course, legislators will introduce hundreds of bills which impact education, and the board will be kept up to date through written reports. Hopefully, Pat will be doing that and not me. First thing to cover is the General Assembly timeline and some key other dates of interest. The 2020 session is a so-called long session. Long sessions are also sometimes referred to as the budget session. The rhythm of Virginia legislative sessions is that in even-numbered years, there's a 60-day session at which a two-year budget is introduced and adopted. In odd-numbered years, there's a 45-day session at which amendments to the biennial budget are considered and adopted. The 2020 session begins on January 8 and ends on March 8. Crossover is February 6. Crossover is the date that each chamber must finalize its own legislation and send it to the other chamber, and that includes the budget. The veto session is scheduled for April 15. This session considers vetoes and/or amendments proposed by the governor for adopted legislation, including the budget. Some other dates that you might be interested in, on November 21, the Virginia School Board Association Delegate Assembly will meet, and this is where the V SBA adopts its legislative positions. In mid-December of this year, the governor historically will prefile a biennial budget proposal before the session exists. That gives you an idea what the governor's priorities are and what he believes is necessary for funding for the next biennium. On January 13 and 14, the V SBA Capitol Conference is held. This is a meeting in Richmond during the legislative session where V SBA members meet to discuss legislative and other issues, and it's also an opportunity, if you go to the meeting, to have interaction with legislators. And finally, the PTA and VEA have advocacy days, and that day will be on January 27, 2020. This year's legislative program starts with thanks to our legislators for increasing funding for K-12 education in the 2019 session. Additional funding was approved for teacher pay, school counselors, and at-risk programs. But obviously, funding needs have not been exhausted, and the proposed 2020 program asks for increased education funding. The reason for funding is illustrated on the screen. Years after the Great Recession, per pupil funding remains 9% below what it was in 2009, adjusted for inflation. In practical terms, then, school divisions are operating with 9% less purchasing power than a decade ago, and that impacts all aspects of the school division's operations. In the next few slides, you will see the four issues which are highlighted as priorities. Two, teacher pay and school facility funding are repeats from last year. Because 2020 is a budget session, re-benchmarking is also included. And there's a third priority, which is completely new, called equity funding. This is the result of a recommendation of the Virginia Department of Education to create a new funding stream. Re-benchmarking is the first area that we need to look at. Re-benchmarking is technical in nature and does not involve changes in statewide funding policy or methodology or funding for new programs unless those programs have already been approved and adopted by the General Assembly. Re-benchmarking involves projecting costs forward for changes in enrollment, salaries, support costs, inflation, and other factors. And the study can mean that costs can increase or decrease depending on the data update in each area. The intent of re-benchmarking is simply to maintain the status quo. Re-benchmarking provides technical updates for the standards of quality, incentive programs, categorical programs, and the lottery proceeds fund. Because re-benchmarking impacts the total cost of direct aid formulas, it impacts both state costs and the required local share that localities must fund for the SOQ and other direct aid programs. As you can see on the screen, the projected state cost for re-benchmarking for the biennium is almost $596 million. The Newport News position is that the board should fully support funding of re-benchmarking. The next priority area is school facility funding. One of the major losses during the Great Recession was support for school construction. One funding stream that used to exist that the state eliminated was for construction grants, and at one time, Newport News received approximately $1.2 million a year in construction funding. The state also has a literary loan fund, but it did not add any new projects for a year, for 10 years, rather. In 2019, funding was restored to the literary fund, but that's only going to meet the backlog and is probably not going to meet any new projects. And of course, one thing to remember about the literary loan is that it's a loan, it's not free money, you have to pay that money back. Another source that some people look at for funding is the lottery funds. The General Assembly now uses what they describe as a flexible lottery allocation method, and it funds all sorts of things. I won't mention all of them, but they include K-3 size reduction programs, special education, Race the GED program, and others. So the lottery funding is certainly not a panacea for school construction needs. Research establishes that school construction impacts student achievement. Students in substandard buildings perform at lower levels than those in newer functional buildings. And of course, finally, higher costs for maintaining aging buildings equals less available funding for student services. The Newport News positions on school funding are two. First, a request to restore construction grant funding, and second, a request for legislation that would permit school boards to finance capital projects with any funds unexpected, unexpended by the school board in any fiscal year. I won't read the Forbes quotes on the screen, but Forbes argues that the teacher shortage is misnamed. Forbes' position is that teacher shortages reflect the lack of commitment to compensate adequately to meet the demand for highly qualified teachers. It's Forbes' contention that there would be plenty of people willing to teach if pay and conditions were improved. This leads us to the teacher pay priority position. Last year, nearly 1,000 teaching positions went unfilled in Virginia. Research supports the idea that teacher compensation is a major factor in not being able to meet the demand for teachers. Again, there isn't necessarily a teacher shortage, just a lack of commitment to meet demand. Published data shows that Virginia teachers are paid $9,365 less than the national average. There has been a legislative initiative to begin to address that. In 2017, the General Assembly approved legislation to move teacher pay to or above the national average. The school board's legislative program asked the General Assembly to start moving toward the stated goal, beginning with a minimum 3% raise in the next budget. Also requested is funding for state incentives, such as paying for license and test fees, and expanding programs to attract more teachers. The final priority position is called equity funding. The Virginia Board of Education has proposed that an equity fund be created, and basically, this is consolidating funds from other sources. And what they're going to do is consolidate the at-risk, add-on, and SOQ prevention, intervention, and remediation funds into a single expanded at-risk, add-on program. This proposal is intended to target funding to school divisions with a high percentage of students qualifying for free breakfast and lunch, and it includes $130 million annually in addition to state funding. The school division's position would be to support the equity funding proposal. Last thing we might, one of the last things we can mention is the V SBA Delegate Assembly, which is happening this week. There are 13 proposed new or revised delegate legislative positions. The V SBA has provided school board members with detailed information on all those proposals, and the V SBA delegates will vote at their assembly this week to approve their legislative The next steps in the process would be to provide our legislators with a copy of the draft program, make it an action item at the December board meeting, and then support the program during the 2020 General Assembly session. If there are questions, I'll attempt to answer them, but I'll probably duck because Pat's not here.
Question, I guess, Mr. Brown.
So the $131 million being consolidated into the equity fund, do we have any idea how that breaks out per division, per the 132 divisions? Is it a little over?
I don't think so. I don't think anybody has that number yet because I'm not sure they've assembled what is going to be in those other funds and then add the $131 million to it and come up with some allocation. I would think that that's probably one of the things that would appear in the governor's budget if the governor thinks it's wise to do that, remembering that the re-benchmarking is a proposal to the governor and the General Assembly, not a given. The VDOE proposal is a proposal, it hasn't been accepted necessarily by the governor yet. So all those things are moving targets until the governor in mid-December makes his proposal, and then we'll see what those numbers look like. If there are any numbers, he may decide not to fund the equity funding proposal.
Okay, so at this point, it's just a VDOE recommendation to the governor's office.
Correct. It's not something that we even know that the governor will support.
And then the second question was around the 80, no, the $4 billion that was identified in the school facility needs. What pot of money is that supposed to come out of? If it doesn't come out of the...
There's no pot of money identified for construction in Virginia, basically. The only identified pots of money in the past have been the construction funds that were given, that no longer exist, and the literary loan funds, which is an application process and is contingent upon there being available funding in the literary loan fund to allocate to individual school divisions. And as I said, it's still a loan. So on top of everything else, what you may not realize is that because it's a loan, when you do a literary loan application, the city has to sign off on the loan. You can't borrow money directly. So the city has to actually sign the application that goes to the state when you are thinking about using a literary loan.
Anyone else? Thank you.
I'm disappearing.
Okay. Okay, next, we have up 5.02, the OPEB Trust, and Steve Cannell is going to give us an update on our local finance board.
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, school board members, Dr. Parker. This is the OPEB Trust Fund, the first semi-annual report to the school board. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. These are typically retiree benefits, other than pension plans, typically including health and life insurance. The OPEB timeline, just a brief timeline, this is just a brief summary. OPEB was formally passed by the school board in June 1991, thereby creating a lifetime school board contribution for retirees, their spouses, and dependents. In 2008 and '09, the City of Newport News began to take action. The city also has a plan similar to ours, and they began to take action to reduce their own OPEB liability and urge the school system to take action to reduce our liability. Several years earlier, the city had created a city OPEB trust fund to accumulate assets to pay the liabilities. We were originally part of the city trust fund. Now, our liability at the time was $194 million. The annual cost, when the plan was first adopted in 1991, was $150,000 per year, but since then, with more retirees added each year and few going off, it had grown to over $5 million per year. Continuing on the timeline, now going forward to July 1, 2009, the OPEB plan was closed to all new hires. It had no impact, however, on existing retirees. July 1, 2011, spouse and dependent school board contributions were closed to those retiring after their stay, and again, there was no impact on existing retirees. Also, July 1, 2011, a started phase in for pre-65 retirees to have their own experience-rated premiums. Herefore, their premium was the exact same as what employees, however, studies showing that those that have retired, their claims were higher, so it's experience-based, and their rates were approximately 40% higher. And again, there was no impact to existing retirees. July 1, 2019, these actions has reduced the liability from $194 million to $81 million, which is a 60% reduction in the liabilities. However, there are still 1,969 retirees receiving the subsidy and 1,722 employees that are still working active and eligible to receive a benefit when they retire. Now comes the trust fund funding. So we separated from the city trust fund. In 2010, the school system joined the V M L VACO OPEB Pool Trust. Membership is comprised now of 52 Virginia governments and public schools. We transferred the small amount that was held in the city trust fund, and we began making additional contributions to fund the liability. The contributions were generally $2.1 million. You'll see a slide in a minute with a graph showing the impact of that. But we had to stop that at the end of, at June 2017, when tight budgets forced them to be continued. However, during that time, we had made contributions of $17.1 million. The OPEB Pool Trust Fund that we belong to, the V M L VACO, has a combined $1.15 billion in assets. Now, we've got $26 million of that. It's split between two portfolios. You're given a choice to invest in Portfolio 1 or Portfolio 2, and Portfolio 1, that's your only choice, is 1 or 2, and Portfolio 1 is weighted heavily towards equities and has more market volatility. Portfolio 2 had $250 million, and that is weighted more towards fixed income such as bonds. The 52 planned participants, we elect a nine-member board of directors, and they oversee hiring of professional managers for the various investment categories, which you'll see in just a minute. We have a slide on that. And as I said before, you can have one of two choices. And as I said before, you can have one of two choices. That's all we choose. Portfolio 1 has more equities, and their projected rate of return is 7.5% in the long run. Portfolio 2 is more fixed income. Their rate of return at the time was 6.5, but they since have lowered it to 6.0. They're so reliant on bonds. Now, state law requires that we have a local finance board to serve as trustee of the OPEB trust funds, as well as to manage and invest the assets of the trust. The school board created the local finance board by duly adopted resolution. We must have three members. The local finance board has executed in accordance with the directions by the school board, a trust joiner agreement, thank you, Mr. Wallen, for those words, to become a participant in the OPEB Pool Trust. And we picked Portfolio 1, which had the long-term rate of return of 7.5%, and you'll see in just a minute how that's turned out. The local finance board directs the investments of the funds consistent with the requirement of the OPEB trust. We meet quarterly, and we review the performance of Portfolio 1 versus Portfolio 2. We can change only once per year, and if we change, we have to move all the funds into one portfolio or the other. We can't split them. So it has to be all in on 1 or all in on Portfolio 2. We estimate, however, that by staying in Portfolio 1 this entire time, that we've earned $2.4 million more than if we had been in Portfolio 2. This is the categories that Portfolio 1 is invested in, and you see how many of the assets that they have of their $900 million and the percent that's split amongst different categories. And this would be similar if you had your own 401K. You might invest in some category similar to this. We have the large-cap equity, which has done very well. You see in the 10 years, 1, 3, 5, and 10-year returns is all 10% to 13.5%. 30% of the money is in that. The small-cap equity has 10%. It had done okay, but this past year, it was hit hard by the downturn in the fall of 2018 and well as May of 2019, we had another downturn for that one month. Real estate, which is third from the bottom, that's been very consistently good. It has 7%. The core bonds and core-plus bonds, that would be the fixed income portion, and they have 21% of the allocation to that. It is dependable, but generally doesn't get very high. You see 3 and 5 and 10-year return less than 4%, where that's been below the average for the entire portfolio. They used to have a diversified hedge fund that earned 4% to 6%, but they replaced that with two new categories, the long-short equity account, which has just been around for six months, but did pretty good in those six months, and the absolute return fund, again, was around for six months and has done pretty good. So we'll wait to see how those things turn out. Now, the slide shows the blue line is the total amount of assets. And so you can see from 2010 how it's growing, and the red line is our contributions, which was generally increasing by $2.1 million per year. We made, most of the time, we made them quarterly. So you see the little stair steps. As you climb up the steps, we were making more and more contributions, but now the contributions have leveled off because after June 2017, we didn't make anymore. But you see that the fund continues to grow based on earnings. This is just isolating the earnings. This is just the earnings. We've earned a total of $9.3 million, and you see from the beginning, it's gone up. There's been a few times that we kind of went negative. You see the up and down. Now, to help smooth things out, because the quarterly performance goes up and down, we have a 12-month moving average. That is the dashed line. And you see there were three time periods, just three time periods in the entire nine years that we've been plotting here. Fall of 2011 to the start of summer 2012, you see a small decline in the moving average. Then fall of 2015 through the summer of 2016, that was almost a whole year, there was again a small decline in the moving average. And then fall to early winter of 2018, a very small decline, and then we've continued upwards. And again, we had $9.3 million, which is $2.4 million more than if we had been in Portfolio 2. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Mr. Brown? So this is OPEB, not to be confused with VRS, correct?
That's correct. VRS is the pension and life insurance, and OPEB is retiree health insurance. Now, VRS also has a component where they do subsidize retirees and give them a subsidy as well. This is our local plan for retiree health insurance. VRS has a component that also provides retiree health insurance.
Okay, so this is healthcare for our retirees?
Yes, provided by Newport News Public Schools.
Not a different benefit, okay. And then I see, so can you go into 1,069 retirees are still being subsidized, but then, so the timeline reflected, or at least it leads you to believe that there was a point at which people stopped coming into the plan, but then we mentioned that there's 1,722 folks who are eligible to go into the plan today?
Yes, they were working as of June 30, 2009.
Okay.
When we stopped the plan, anyone who was employed then still continued to accrue and could earn benefits if they retired. They have to retire in order to get something. So if someone leaves before they retire, then they don't get anything.
And current employees today, their retirement health plan is through VRS?
If you joined after June 30, 2009, then your retiree health insurance subsidy is just through VRS, nothing from the school board.
Okay. And?
Now, it's not a small amount. It is like $4 per year. So it's of your year retirement, if you work 30 years, $120 a month is, you know, a somewhat amount, reasonable amount.
And so the folks in here, they have the ability to get the VRS plus this, plus access this fund, the folks that are in here? And then, so in terms of the blue line and the red line, can you tell me a little bit more about, we are not contributing to the fund currently, so this is, the blue line is simply interest that we've accrued? And is there plans in the future to pick up contributions, or the 1,722 that are going to be coming into the plan, the amount of money there is good and is enough for them? Or, you know, what is our thought process around?
Well, we're not using any of the money yet. We're accumulating the money. We're not drawing any out, but the actuary projects that by about the early 2030s, everything else being the same, even if we don't put in anything more, we would have enough. Then, right now, we're just paid out of our regular budget. And so that's included in the budget, about $4.5 million or so. When we get to 2032 or so, 33, we'll have enough in the plan. You can stop having it in the regular budget, and the fund will have sufficient money to pay out until the last retiree dies, which is passes away, I'm sorry, around 2070 or 80 perhaps.
Okay. And so just to clarify, we're still contributing money to OPEB right now annually, or we haven't been since?
We're paying the premiums for the retirees.
We're paying those premiums?
We're not paying extra into the fund to build up money, but we are, we're paying all the premiums for the existing 1,700-some retirees, and that's like $4.5 million or so.
Any other questions?
Oh, you asked, could it go, could we start to contribute in the future? We could if it was decided to do that.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, for the report. Next, we'll have 5.03, APSAT data, and we'll have Dr. Poole.
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Searls Law, School Board Members, and Dr. Parker. Tonight, I'm here to share with you data regarding the College Board suite of assessments given during the 18, 19 school year. As you are all aware, Newport News Public Schools is focused on college career and citizen readiness. In order to provide the framework for a college readiness approach to ensure all of our students have the opportunity to attend a college or university once they graduate, NPS has embedded opportunities for students to participate in the College Board suite of assessments. From the PSAT to the SAT and including advanced placement exams, NPS students are given several opportunities to become college-ready. Starting with the PSAT, Newport News covers the cost for all 10th and 11th grade students to participate in this rigorous assessment. Students in 8th or 9th grade may take the PSAT or opt for the PSAT 8, 9. However, students in those grade levels are responsible for the cost. Since the format of the PSAT is the same format as the SAT, this gives students a lower-stress environment to experience this level of assessment prior to the SAT. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships. High school students are entered into the competition by taking the PSAT during their 11th grade year. PSAT results are also used as a way to predict success in advanced placement courses. Results students receive by participating in the PSAT guide them on how to improve when taking the SAT. Starting a few years ago, the score reports also map students to their own customized and free, let me say that one more time, free, online SAT prep course through Khan Academy. In addition, once a student takes the SATs, Khan Academy will alter their practice pain based on their SAT performance. The curriculum development team are currently looking at solutions to integrate this online course into the students' curriculum, so all of our students take up that opportunity. Current seniors have taken the PSAT two times, which gives us comparable data from year to year. As you can see on this graph, every subgroup showed growth on the evidence-based reading and writing, or the EBRW portion of the PSAT, from taking the test from 10th grade, excuse me, to 11th grade. It's also of important note that during the 2017 administration, we had just over 80% of the class who took the assessment. Then during their junior year, during the 2018 PSAT administration, we had over 86% of the students who participated in this assessment. As a comparison, the national average for the EBRW was 489, and the state average was 499. Looking at the same group of students for the math portion of the PSAT, every subgroup showed growth from the 10th to the 11th grade administration. Again, the comparison, the national average was 478, and the state average was 484. As mentioned earlier, there are many reasons connected to why the PSAT is administered in Newport News. Most notably, the results help students to create a plan to see more success on the SATs. However, one area that's not as well-known is the use of AP potential. This software allows school counselors the opportunity to find students who are not enrolling in AP courses, however, they have the potential to be successful in those high-level courses. Therefore, councils are able to use this data from the first time students take the PSAT, some as early as 8th grade, to encourage them to take the rigorous AP courses. This work also supports the goal of the National Math and Science Initiative Grant, or NIMZI grant, that we have in place in our division. Moving to AP classes, they're specifically designed to create a challenging learning environment for students. They simulate the level of rigor seen in college courses and allow students the potential to earn college credit, generally with a score of 3 or higher on their final AP exam. Even when students are not successful at earning the college credit, universities and colleges take note of students that have taken these rigorous level courses when they apply to the universities and colleges. One of the many benefits being a Newport News student is that the division covers the cost for students to take their AP exam. Last year, there were a total of just over 3,300 AP tests administered to Newport News students. NPS offers 31 out of the 38 College Board AP classes. With all of these opportunities for students, most Virginia colleges will offer both credit and/or a placement in a higher-level course based on the student's AP score. The three-year trend of students taking at least one AP test has been slowly declining. This drop in number of students taking AP tests could be attributed to the fact that the high school enrollment has also been declining over the past three years. However, even with the decline in the number of AP students, the number of AP tests being administered across Newport News has stayed steady, with only dropping 73 tests over the three years of data. This graph represents the number of students taking at least one AP test by school. The schools with a yellow rectangle represent schools currently within the NIMZI grant. As you can see, Warwick has shown steady increases over the past three years, they are in MZ school, with a 22% growth of students taking at least one test over the three-year period. Some of the initiatives Warwick have instituted are promoting AP courses in a town hall-type of meeting each quarter to students, AP teachers recruited an average, and honors classes along with AP student ambassadors. The students there created a video, an AP video, and played it throughout the school year to gain interest to other students. There were parental information nights held throughout into August. And finally, they created an AP community through Google Classroom, which students were able to ask questions regarding their summer assignment to give them additional supports. As seen on this slide, the percentage of tests receiving a 3 or higher, which is generally noted to be a passing score, has been decreasing since 2017, where 31% of the exams scored 3 or higher. Nationally, in 2019, for AP tests, the 3 or higher rate was 59%, and it was 65% across our Commonwealth. Performance on AP exams can lead to students earning national awards. They have the ability to be AP scholars based on how many AP tests they take and their average score for those tests. In 2019, Newport News had 232 AP Scholar Awards. Within this group, eight of our students received the AP Scholar with Distinction Award, which means they averaged a score of eight, or they averaged a score of three or higher on eight of their tests, or four of their tests, rather, in taking eight tests. Sorry, I got tongue-刺ed on that one. Moving to the SAT, this assessment is not currently paid for by Newport News. Therefore, students must pay if they opt to take the test. Last year, Newport News had 1,861 students graduating. 915 of those students took the SATs at least once while in high school, which represents 49% of our graduating classes that took the SATs at least one time. This graph shows a three-year trend of SAT evidence-based reading and writing scores. The class of 2019 mean score is 518. Nationally, the average was 531, and it was 567 across Virginia. The math mean scores for the class of 2019 is 494, which is a slight decrease. And again, in comparison, the national average was 521 and 551 for the state. And continuing to move this work forward, there are a few next steps. Teachers and school counselors were encouraged to increase participation in the PSAT for 8th or 9th grade students who have completed Algebra I. The Khan Academy SAT online course will be integrated into curriculum during the 2020, 2021 school year, so all students have the opportunity to participate in this program. The possibility of offering the SAT during the school day is also being pursued. Teachers are receiving professional development on the new curriculum and resources provided by College Board that just came out this past summer. Curriculum supervisors are creating avenues for AP teachers to collaborate across the division on best practices. And members of the teaching and learning team are developing ways to replicate the Saturday tuning sessions offered by NIMZI, so all of our students have any needed supports that they need throughout the school year. Thank you for taking the time to hear this report. If you have any questions, I have a small team with me here ready to answer them.
Assignments?
So I would really encourage any students and parents who are watching this meeting to take the PSAT, pay attention to that Khan Academy report. It's really detailed, and what I love about it is it's almost individualized to the student, so the student can find out exactly what they need to study to get a better score on the SAT. My, both my daughters have been through this college application period, and it's really important to... and it's really important to have a good SAT score if you want to get into one of the top colleges. And you really can improve your score, and all of this Khan Academy information is free. So, what can we do to try to encourage and build a routine around getting your score report and having a study plan for improving your SAT score?
So, that's one of the goals of integrating into curriculum. So that every 10th grade student, when they take the PSAT and they get their results, then by January, they have logged into Khan Academy. And we communicate to parents, and they do get the individualized course based off of that score report. And the students who don't take it, they actually can take several small assessments in Khan Academy that give them their own personalized pathway through the online course. This is, it is a tremendous opportunity. I wholeheartedly agree with you, and it is something that I'm very much pushing for, to make sure all of our students take us up on this opportunity. Even the students who say, "Well, I'm not planning to go to college." Well, you never know when that door may open, so you want to be as prepared as you can be. So, really putting that in front of them and having an obligation with certain sets of teachers to say, "Here's your score report, here's, we're going to connect to your College Board account, to your Khan Academy account," and it'll make those connections automatically. Because then when they take the SATs, it actually will update them and give them a more personalized course as well.
And you know, one last thing is, I think over the summer months, we really should look at, you know, a cram academy or some kind of, you know, intensive period where the students can go in, because frankly, that's what the rich kids are doing, is they're cramming over the summer and learning, you know, how to take these tests. Why can't we use our Spark program and try to incorporate some test prep over the summer when they have time?
Very good point.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Oh, Dr. Best?
I have a couple. For, just a question regarding, I'm looking at Achievable Dream. For number of students taking at least one AP test, their numbers went down from 132 to 34. Is there any reason for that that you are aware of? And then I'll go ahead and ask my second one, that the scores of three or above have been decreasing. Is there some explanation for that? And then I asked you one more little. I'm also reading some things, and I've heard news stories as far as some colleges not requiring SATs. So what is the plan, and how do you all take that into consideration? Or do you take it into consideration?
All right, I think I got them all three for you, Dr. Best. So with an Achievable Dream, I'll have to research that to see what their numbers of enrolled, like pre-AP, and what are we doing to drive the students into the AP-level course, to really look and see what we can do and see why that number is declining. As far as the three or more decreasing in Y, you know, there's been a few curricular changes over the past couple of years in AP courses, and we're just trying to really catch up. And it's, you know, it is natural when you see an uptick of enrollment and test-taking. So even though our enrollment's declining, remember, our tests have stayed about level, so we have students taking more assessments. And when you see more assessments, sometime you'll see a decline in the scores. But we're, I'm really working with Dr. Beckerdite, and we're really focusing on what are we doing to provide the proper support to our AP teachers and to do more collaboration across the division? Because a lot of times, AP teachers are what are called singletons in schools, where it's, you know, if you teach AP physics, you're probably the only one at school who's teaching AP physics. So what are we doing to cross-pollinate and cross-plan? So we're intentionally building those into professional development for teachers as well to really help say, "What are the best practices so that we can increase our score rate?" And I think the final one, as far as the SAT requirement, you're correct. There are, I've seen a couple articles, even some Virginia State colleges that are starting to take a portfolio-based. So you'll see, as we're building the new profile of a graduate, we're really going to build in a profile, a portfolio build for them around those attributes so that they can start using that as college entrance as well. So we're really trying to hit every single base that we can.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Harris?
Well, he's actually good. He answered my question. Thanks.
Mr. Brown?
So...
Mr. Gore, go ahead, Mr. Gore.
Oh, I definitely agree with Ms. Simons. I've taken the SAT twice, and with Khan Academy, I was able to see like a little bit of development. Concerning the SAT in general and how we're able to take AP courses, would you propose a preparatory SAT class? Because as Ms. Simons said, people are able to find SAT courses in all states of, you know, the country, and of course, develop their score. But how are we able to do that?
So, you know, I think it's a double-edged sword. And I've just seen it personally in other divisions I've worked in, where we have a face-to-face class, it starts off great, and then enrollment dwindles quickly because there are so many electives and options for students these days. So I really think with what Khan Academy has developed, with building that into English and math curriculum, where teachers have a responsibility of that, and we build in tutoring sessions and help sessions, I think that will help kind of make more of a blended learning environment for our students, because really, that personalizes it. So when you make a curriculum for even a semester SAT prep course, generally, a teacher's going to follow that curriculum, and it makes it harder to differentiate if you have 25 students. But if you blend it with the online program, they're getting personalized. So then, Mr. Gore's going to come in and ask a specific question that he needs to know, and the teacher can help with that. So trying to blend that, I think is going to be the first step. And if we still need more, then we would look at something a little bit more rigorous like that.
Now, Mr. Brown?
Yes, so my comment would be about the PSAT. I have a couple questions and a comment. So, yeah, questions around the 8th grade, 9th grade PSAT. We find out, what would it cost for every student to be offered the PSAT in 8th grade and the 9th grade? What would that, what would the budget impact be? And then, secondly, we talked about having the SAT offered on a school day. So what would the cost be of including that in the budget so we can have the SAT offered on a school day? I know that it's, I know it's very impactful. I know of at least one family in my district that that was the reason why they did not go to college, was because they could not get to the SAT. You'd be surprised at how something as simple as, well, you can't get to the school on Saturday if your family doesn't support that, and isn't going to pay for that, and isn't going to drive you, then that becomes, that becomes the barrier, becomes the reason. And so we don't want anything like that to be the reason. And there's too many stories like that. So getting it offered on a, on a school day would be fantastic, in addition to the other times we offer. I'd love to see us offer it more, because I think your, the charts four and five, they show, you know, really my point, which is that the more times the kids are taking it, the better their scores are getting. So, and with every improvement in score, is it increasing the levels of scholarships that these kids are able to get and the offers they get from colleges? So, you know, I got many regrets in life, but one of them was not taking the PSAT. So at the time, I did not take the PSAT, and came to find out later on that that is how the recruitment process starts. So when my own kids took the PSAT, that was when the college letter started coming home. "We want you to come to our college," and that's very encouraging and very life-altering for students. So getting that PSAT often in the 8th grade and the 9th grade, and then getting into the SAT, starting that off and doing it multiple times, I think that, you know, that could be a real pathway to boosting our score, so I'd love to see that. And I echo Ms. Simons' comments, and I'd love to see us do, as part of our Spark program, do some test prep during the summer, because that is what parents are paying for. They're paying good money to have test prep classes. So if we can offer that for free for our students to do that, that would be fantastic as well. Yeah, a real equalizer.
So absolutely agree. The cost, I can get you the budget implications on the increase in the PSAT. My recommendation would be if we start doing that for grade 8 to do, even maybe in grade 8 and 9, to do PSAT 8-9, because then the struggle in math is not there. It's actually developed for that level student. They have an assessment out for that now. And I do think, I want to say cost is around $17. I can't quite see the phone from here.
So I did get a quote for different scenarios. Some of which incorporate the PSAT 8-9.
Gotcha.
And this division-wide assessment of the SAT for our juniors.
Okay, so the, if we did the PSAT grade 10 and added that, and it looks like the SAT day, it would add around $81,000 to our budget. So to have the SAT for 11th graders, if we did just the SATs on that, it's about $55,000 is our quote. And that includes a reduction for our free and reduced student population, but that would be the division cost right now. I did talk to Valerie Keating last week on Friday, who is our College Board representative, and she's still trying to even push further what she can, as far as she can to get our price as low as possible by looking at the state's rate of our free and reduced lunch. So she's, she's still tweaking it a little bit, but that would be the, the cost to increase some of the assessments on.
Fantastic. And to me, that sounds well worth the, well worth the cost.
Well, and you know, it's, you know, funny you say that, because earlier this, this year, actually probably a month after I started here, an article came out about Richmond Public Schools, who this is their first year where they're offering SATs for everybody, for the same exact reasons were listed in the article.
One, one point on the AP participation to consider is that we have a second option for students who are college-level experience. Well, actually, we have two others, but the one other that impacts AP enrollment would be dual enrollment. So some schools, going back to the Achievable Dream, we would also want to look to see whether there's been an increase in dual enrollment participation as well, which gives students that alternate college-level experience. So the data is not, does not tell the whole story. That's another factor that we may want to look at as well. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Poe.
Thanks, y'all.
Okay, next we'll have 5.04, our new course proposal for physical year 2021. And I believe we have Dr. Jones.
Okay, good evening, Chair Hunter, Vice Chair Searl Slaw, School Board members, and Dr. Parker. Tonight, I will share new course proposals for your review for the 2020-2021 school year. Each year, the Curriculum Committee provides a timeline and application for new course proposals to principals and supervisors to enhance the academic program for students in Newport News. Although particular course proposals, although particular schools propose new course offerings and revisions, upon board approval, all schools will have access to the approved courses unless it is designated as a magnet-specific course. There are four new course proposals presented tonight from the areas of fine arts, social studies, and science. There is one revision in world language. The first is music appreciation. Music appreciation is proposed as a new elective course in grades 9 through 12 at Menchville High School. It is a semester course with one-half credit. There are no budget implications. Music appreciation is a course designated to introduce musical masterworks in history by studying basic elements, mediums, styles, and forms. Students will reflect on the historical perspective of music and how it has evolved in our society and in various cultures. African-American Studies. African-American Studies is proposed as a new course elective for all high schools in the state of Virginia. Newport News Public School Social Studies Supervisor, Renita Williams, currently serves on the VDOE African-American Studies Course Curriculum Development Team. She has been recently appointed to the Governor's African American History Education Commission. It is a year-long course with one credit. Budget implications include text and online resources. African-American Studies is a survey of African-American history from the origins of transatlantic slave trade to modern day. Students will analyze the social, economic, and political effects of key persons and events as well as refine skills in research, analysis, and historical interpretation. Introduction to Social Studies for L's. Introduction to Social Studies for English Learners is proposed by Demby High School. Demby and Menchville High Schools serve as our largest English learner population. The course will be offered in grades 9 through 12. It is a year-long course with no budget implications. Introduction to Social Studies for English Learners is designed for students in the English learner program at Demby High School that need additional support with language proficiency. All core social studies themes, world geography, world history, US history, and government, will be introduced to build a foundation of background knowledge, key vocabulary, and provide opportunities to improve oral and written communications. Science and Technology Communications. Science and Technology Communications is proposed by Woodside High School to enhance their Arts and Communication Magnet Program. It is a one-credit year-long elective course. There are no budget implications for this course. Science and Technology Communications will enhance literacy and research in the disciplines of earth science, biology, physics, and chemistry. Digital literacy will be developed through the engineering design process as students become problem finders to develop solutions that will be communicated through various multimedia platforms. This course will incorporate science, technology, and communication in an innovative and project-based approach to develop literacy, career, and life skills. Finally, we have a course provision, revision for Native Spanish 1 and 2, which is proposed by Susanna Bailey, the World Languages Supervisor. Native Spanish 1 and 2 are organized on the same pathways as Honors Spanish 3 and 4. As noted in the chart, Native Spanish 1 and 2 are aligned to prepare students for the Advanced Placement Spanish, covering related themes, information, rigorous projects, and assessments. The rationale for the revision is to provide Native Spanish-speaking students with the same opportunity to earn Honors credit as students that are also on the advanced pathway. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
I do.
Oh, Dr. Best?
Oh, okay. Can you go back?
I lost my slide for the African-American History course. What slide?
I'm sorry. I started.
There is.
She has it up there.
It's up there.
Oh, it's up there. Okay, so, so this one will be offered to all Newport News Public School students?
Yes.
It's an online course?
It's not an online course. We will use online resources to support the course. It will be a face-to-face class.
Okay, will be, okay, face-to-face, and it's offered at all Newport News, okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you. Okay, we all moved the agenda. 5.05 Attendance Report, 5.06 Membership Report, 5.07 Construction Report. They're a part of your packages. If there are no questions, we will accept them. And we have 5.08, comments by our superintendent.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I will not be the last one to offer best wishes and congratulations to Delegate-elect Simons on her, on her recent electoral win. And we look forward to greater things in the future, and definitely will reflect on your commitment to this board and your service to the community. So thank you very much for that. Mr. Chairman, as was stated earlier this evening, this is American Education Week, and our students and staff are celebrating the annual observance by promoting the great things happening in our schools. I want to take this moment to thank all of our families, the PTAs, and members of the community who are visiting our schools and participating in many activities taking place this week in our classrooms. The festivities will continue throughout the week. On Wednesday and Thursday, the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts Art Mobile will visit Newport News. The Art Mobile will be stationed in the Todd Stadium parking lot. Middle and high school art students will participate in lectures, tours of the Art Mobile, which will feature an exhibition of 12 fellowship artists whose art is part of the museum's permanent collection. The Art Mobile is open to the public on Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00, and Thursday from 2:30 to 5:00 p.m., and we invite families to come out and tour this one-of-a-kind art exhibit. Special thanks to Pat Franklin, our supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts for coordinating the visit. Next week, on Monday in particular, November 25th, we're looking forward to inviting our elected officials and guests for the principal, the first annual Principal-for-a-Day event in Newport News Public Schools. We have invited legislators, school board members, city council members, and business and community leaders who will join some of our principals to learn more about teaching and learning and the vast variety of programs and services that are available in our, in our students. And we'll have a great lunch afterwards. I will host my second annual Family Forum on Wednesday, December 4th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Demby Community Center. I invite families to join me in a discussion about school culture, climate, and safety, and look forward to members of the Demby community to come on out. We are offering childcare for children 4 and over, and we're offering for freshmen, for those who come. I'm looking forward to some great discussion as we partner with our families and in support of our students. Today, we launched a new partnership with the Today, we launched a new partnership with the national nonprofit, Donors Choose, to help teachers tap into a network of 4 million donors to support classroom projects that align with mission and vision goals. Newport News Teachers have raised over $570,000 and completed over 1,300 educational projects through Donors Choose to support student learning. So we, we've had individuals already participating in Donors Choose, now we formalized the partnership. We are one of 30 members of the Donors Choose District Partnership Program. This partnership allows us to support teachers and monitor all donated materials. It also gives our teachers access to matching funding opportunities through corporate partnerships. The Newport News Education Foundation was recently awarded $300,000 from the One Community Transformation Grant, which is offered by Newport News Shipbuilding, to support STEM education in our school division. We were one of, one of three finalists for that award and Newport News Public Schools won this year. So, so thank you Newport News Shipbuilding for supporting STEM education in our schools. The Foundation's proposal builds on STEM education through collaboration with the Brooks Crossing Innovation and Opportunity Center to provide technology training for over 400 Newport News Public School teachers, materials and equipment. The grant will also provide field experiences for 6,000 students at the Innovation Center. And we, again, we'd like to thank Newport News Shipbuilding and our Education Foundation for, for becoming partners in this grant. Congratulations to our first Lego, Lego League Robotics Team who competed in the regional event on Saturday, November 9th at Crittenton Middle School. Eight of the 18 participating teams were from Newport News. Congratulations to the Riverside Elementary Team for earning first place in innovation, in innovation project and to the Discovery STEM Academy Team who took second place overall for robotic, robot performance and a judge's award. Our teams were challenged to, to, to program a robot to score points on a playing field and develop a solution to a problem they, they identified. Special thanks to our STEM leadership team and our partners for this great event. I would also like to remind all students and parents that schools will be closed for students on Wednesday through Friday, November 27th through 29th for the holidays. I wish everyone a safe and a wonderful Thanksgiving. And that concludes my remarks this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, are there any more cards? Do we have any cards? There being none, we are moved to item number seven, Matters by the School Board. And we'll have Mr. Gore start us off this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to address, I wanted to start off by addressing the issue at Warwick High School. As many of you know, like there, there has been a potential threat. And there's been a lot of questions that has been asked. And as I stand, as I, you know, attend this school, it hasn't impacted us very much. However, as my teacher was saying today, I learned that acts of terror are only powerful if you, if you only let them do their job, which is to evoke terror. And that moving forward as a community is more important than looking upon past events. Also, I wanted to bring up how, how about last week, a custodian came and she hugged me and said hi. And this was like my first occurrence with this. And then I learned that although I've like never talked to a custodian before, it still doesn't diminish that familial aspect. So I learned that, that we're still family at the end of the day, at the end of the day. Also, as Dr. Parker said, I will not be the last person, but I also wanted to congratulate you. I did see you at my, at the academic, before the academic team match. And I wanted to just say it again, so thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gore. Dr. Best?
Good evening. And I'm just going to segue something that Isaiah talked about. He talked about giving people power and, and how terror, it doesn't work unless we, we give it that power. But I had an opportunity to attend a band competition at Warwick High School and the participants were Heritage High School, Warwick High School and Demby High School. And it was just one of the most amazing, heartwarming, enjoyable family activities that I had been to in, in quite a while. And the families, they were so excited and, and people from different schools were cheering on different schools and clapping for different schools. And I had an opportunity to talk with, you know, parents and students. And I just happened to overhear a conversation and someone said, they didn't want us to have this, they thought it would be a problem. And I think they were talking about us, school board and adults, I think that's who they were talking about. I didn't ask any questions, I was trying to listen. But I, I just thought it, I was just so glad everything was going so well. And I said to myself, we're not going to let a few students or adults that make bad choices dictate what the activities that we're going to have for these wonderful students in Newport News Public Schools. So that was just a wonderful activity and I look forward to many more of them. For the teachers, hang in there. For the students, hang in there, we have a couple more days before Thanksgiving holiday. Please get lots of rest, eat you some food and come back and ready for that, get ready for that long stretch before the winter holidays. And I too would like to congratulate Ms. Simons, we're going to miss you. I just kind of got my flow with you, it's been a pleasure getting to know you, but we wish you much success and we know that you're going to be a great advocate for education.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank the reporters today, Mr. Wallen, Ms., Mr. Canel, Dr. Poe and Dr. Jones. I really appreciate the reports because every time you all give reports, I learn something, so which is, which is, which is great. I had a chance to visit Heinz Middle School this Saturday. They had a family engagement program there. And I was there for about two hours, I talked to a lot of families. A lot of families came there to get clothing. They got briefed on the education system. And I tell you, it, it was, it was one of the most awe-inspiring events I've, I've been to as far as dealing with the school system. They was very appreciative. And I saw a, a team-building effort from the family engagement team. And it was people that just generally cared, you could feel it. All of the vendors had great things to say. And I hope we, and I told you, I hope we get a chance to do this more often across the school division because it was, it was surely needed there. A couple of parents wanted to talk about, you know, their child being at the high school. And a couple of say, hey, you know, they, they really appreciate that because their child, they see the difference in their child because they're in a different environment or around what they call the older kids. So a lot of motivation from parents, you know, they see great strides in their kids and I always think that's positive. And so I know change helps. So really appreciate hearing that from them. Also Shelley, I'm going to miss you, but congratulations on, on the job we're done. Third time's worth the charm. So I really appreciate all the support that you've given this school board and the school system and all of the hard work that you, that you put toward those efforts. Climate-wise, and this, you know, for my chairman here and the rest of the board members. I, I don't want the school system to stand in the way of, of parents, family members being able to find out answers or, or get support for their, for their, for their children. The bottom line there, we are a public institution, which means that we serve the public. When I was a drill sergeant, they, they, when I graduated, the instructor said, Sergeant Harris, the stress is not between you and the trainee. The stress is between the trainee and the objective and task that he or she must perform. So I just want to make sure that, you know, when parents call the school system, which I knew, you guys have been doing a great job of that. When they call the school system and they want answers or whatever the case may be, you know, just please make sure we're doing it in a timely manner. Because I, I don't want this type of climate to get out in the community. I've always heard positive things about the school system, but yes, sometimes you hear that one, that one, that one thing, you know, makes you pause and make you have to, you know, go back and make sure we're doing what we are supposed to be doing. Because we are here to, you know, educate and, and safety of everybody's, you know, child. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we, you know, are checking ourselves. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Brown?
All right. Well, I too want to say congratulations to Ms. Simons. I'm not going to say goodbye now because you do have another meeting at least, yeah. Another meeting with us. And I'm looking forward to all the things that you're going to do for the schools while you're up there in Richmond. And we thank you for your leadership and we thank you for your support. And we're looking forward to working with you, I'm looking forward to working with you at the state level. I think tonight we saw, we heard some, some great presentations around the PSAT and SAT and I'm, I'm very much inspired and, and I love to see, love to see that, I get excited about those, those types of tests and measures, especially because as we look at our strategic plan and look at the kinds of things that we want to measure as a division, things that we want to get better at and do more of. I love the measure of the AP Scholar, increasing the number of AP Scholars that we have from year to year. Having that as a, as an objective goal for our division, I think is a good measuring stick, as well as our PSAT scores and our SAT scores. Because we heard tonight that those scores are highly correlated with the AP exams and, and classes that students are able to take. So whenever you have a measure that is going to be indicative of multiple measures of goodness, then that's usually a good thing to, to try to hang a hat on and try to push forward and promote. Love the idea of, I'll mention it again because I've looked at it for a number of years. Love the idea of offering the PSAT and the SAT for free to all of our students. I think that's so critically important and it will, for nothing, if nothing else, really just increase the number of students who have opportunity to go to college if they so choose to and increase the number of students who maybe thought that college wasn't within their reach will make it within their reach for them if they thought it wasn't. Not that everyone has to go to college, right? But we want everyone to have the opportunity to go who have the potential to do that, if that's what they choose to do. And I think those are critical enablers. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, I'm looking forward to Thanksgiving and hopefully I won't eat too much pie, stay. Don't go over on the calories. I'm looking forward as well to, we have the Virginia School Board Association Annual Convention this week. So starting tomorrow morning, we'll be up in Williamsburg, looking forward to fellowshipping with my other board members up there and learning more and hopefully learning some things that we can bring back here to the school division that will make us better. And I know that the legislative presentation we had today, that'll be some of the things that we'll be talking about at the VSBA. So I want to thank Mr. Wallen for the presentation there that got me prepared to think about and start conversing about some of the things that we need to, to advocate for at the state level. And then now you know, we're already, we've been in you here for the next three days, talking to you about the things that we need to get done at the state level because we, we have quite a bit of work to do. And the last thing I'll just want to, to wrap up, I say, and I, we had a great presentation, we had a great forum for the Huntington students and families that occurred down at the Downing Gross this past month. It was a, a great opportunity to hear from those students and families and hear how the move has impacted their lives. The move from the old Huntington facility to being Huntington at Heritage and how it has impacted their lives and hurt really nothing but really positive things. And, and also we've seen the increases in the students' performance and their test scores from that, from that move. So from my vantage point, it's been nothing but really positive. I know that as a board, it's just reality, reality is what it is, I'm always the one who injects the reality. Reality is what it is, that, you know, within the span of this board, we may not see the school, the facility Huntington built within the span of this board because just the timeline of what it takes to, to get it done and the pace at which we are moving. But one of the things that we do have within our span of control is keeping those students at Huntington, at Heritage High School and providing a permanent, a semi-permanent home for those students that are Huntington students at Heritage High School until that facility is built. And hopefully the next board or, you know, hopefully in the near future, the next board will be opening up that Huntington facility. And I'm going to continue to support that, but I think that that's a good step that we can, we can take in this, this current year.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Ely?
Thank you. I had the wonderful opportunity to have visited a couple of schools last month. One school stand, stood out to me amazed with their anti-bullying rally with Saunders Elementary School. When I said they put on a, a show, they put on a show. They had Warwick High School band there, they had dance teams there. It was just amazing, it just stood out the most out of the whole pep rally. Their involvement with the police department, Rashad Wright, the teachers, it was, and the kids was just amazing. So many times you hear, we don't need the police in the schools. But in Newport News Public School System, those police officers were amazing. The kids loved them, the interaction was amazing, it was very idea and very, um, eye-opening for me. And the teacher that put it together, Ms. Jennifer Marine, she's here in the audience. You did an amazing job, I was highly impressed. I also had the opportunity of going to the tennis ball, the Cleveland Team Tennis Ball this weekend and it was great. I would like to personally thank the Newport News Shipyard and Jennifer Balkins. The whole administrative team will be sponsoring, how many kids is it?
Entire senior class.
The whole entire senior class next year. So out of their own personal money, this not North Park run of the Shipyard money, they decided to come together and sponsor the whole class out of their own money. So thank you Jennifer Balkins and the whole Shipyard team. I'm so excited about all the schools in my district got the Clean School Awards. I think that comes from me going to all the schools, they don't know when Mr. Ely's going to pop up. I'm sorry, Dr. Park, you're not supposed to call, but I'm riding past Heritage, let me pop up and see what's going on here. And the schools are all, those custodians, those, those, those custodians, they always work in diligent around the clock. And not just being custodians, they also are part of the school division. Whether they telling the child to stop running or they helping the child with their homework, they're definitely a part of NMPS, they're more than just custodians. So I'm highly appreciative of them and thank them. And I'm going to miss Shelley Simons, but I'm so glad that I know you're going to fight for us in Richmond. You're definitely what we need. The whole town, why she was running, you know, me and Shelley became very close when we got on the board. When I first got on the board, mom, my mom's very overprotective. She drew the shout, so she said, Shelley, you're John's mom while we on the board. Every conference we go to, everything, anything I ever had questions with when I first got on the board, Shelley was always there to hide, I mean, to help me and to make sure I did the right thing. So Shelley, I definitely going to miss you, but I know you're going to definitely do a great job for all children, not in just Newport News, but all over Virginia. You know, you're, you're definitely a role model, you're a leader and I'm definitely going to miss you the most.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Delegate Elect, School Board Member, Ms. Shelley Simons.
Well, thank you for, for all the well-wishes. It's, it's been a really wonderful day to be here with you guys and to feel the support. Let me first start out by reminding everyone that this week is Virginia College Application Week. So if you know any high school seniors, they can apply for free to in-state Virginia colleges. And I also want to thank you so much for the presentation on what we're doing with AP and making sure our students take the SAT because we want high expectations for all of our kids, all of our kids. If they make a choice when they're in high school, they're junior, that they maybe want to go into a trade school or not go to college, that's fine. But until they get there, we need to have those high expectations for every single one of our students, we owe them that. I also want to say that I've, one of the things I love so much about Newport News Public Schools is this belief we have that smart is something you become. That you have to persist, that you have to keep taking that SAT over and over again until you get the score you want. You can't give up. Just like if you really want to go to the General Assembly, you probably need to keep running. My last meeting will be next December, this, this December meeting. And, you know, I, I love that I really started in my leadership career kind of with you all on the school board and, and I really appreciate everything, the civility of the school board and how, you know, we, we talk to each other about the goals and, and the beautiful. you know, we, we talk to each other about the goals. And, and the beautiful thing about being on the school board has been that we all have had the interest of children at heart. And so, you know, navigating these decisions has been pretty easy because we all know that we're here for children. You know, we're, we're not necessarily here for, for other things. We're, we're about children. So, it's been, it's been wonderful to serve. And I will stop before I start to get too emotional. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. Vice Chair, Ms. Oles.
Well, I'm jumping on that bandwagon. Congratulations, Shelley.
Thank you.
We are really proud of you. It's a great confidence knowing that you are well aware of the needs of public education in the state of Virginia. So, you are definitely who needs to be in Richmond. We're gonna miss you. As we talked about the possibility of SAT Con Academy during Spark, I just, I started getting giddy. Because in our house right now, you know, my daughter's applying for college. And we have made very good use of Con Academy. And it has made a huge difference. Summer slide for students looks different, manifests itself differently at different ages. So, you're thinking summer slide for the young ones means they need to be reading. From say, middle school, it's keeping up their, their skills just in creative thinking and collaborative thinking. And for our high school students, that summer slide is them and their preparation to get where they need to go in a very, very tough time. Senior year is no joke, as is not the junior year. So, if we could jump on this bandwagon. So, Dr. Poe, I'm looking for this to be a true possibility for us, for our students. And thank you for your vision on that. I got the joy to go to the Transportation Team Appreciation Day. That was so fun. I don't know why I was so giddy seeing that yellow school bus, brand new, all yellow and shiny. I kept taking pictures of it. It was actually a special bus because it was the 15,000 bus, propane bus for Bluebird. And Newport News Public Schools owns that bus. So, it's really, really special. But what's more special are the staff and our transportation team. They have a feat to get our students where they need to go each and every day. And I know that their biggest challenge is not the students, it's the parents. So, I really, really thank them for the effort that they do. And they do it well. The other thing that I really enjoyed attending since our last meeting was the State of the City Address. It was a neat format this year where different parts of the city got to have a voice. So, Dr. Parker did an ex, did an excellent job tooting our horn. And it's where we got to make the announcement that the all-time high 93% graduation rate. And let's see, the decrease dropout rate of 2.1%. I know these numbers are extra special for us. But what that says about us as a district is that we're not letting our kids slip through the cracks. It's trying to educate all children so that they are successful. And so, bumping that up a notch even with preparing them for SAT. If they want to go, then yay. If they have another choice, then even that preparation can help them reach those goals and dreams. So, it's been a fun, a fun month. So, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, thank, thank.
I'm done.
Thank you. So, that brings me between me, you, and debate. So, there's great things happening in, in Newport News Public Schools, as you heard tonight. To our fellow board member and delegate-elect Shelley Simons, congratulations on being elected to the Virginia House of Delegates. And I know you are gonna do, you are gonna approach this as the same, with the same enthusiasm and opportunities that you have done and served here on this Newport News School Board. And so, we're looking for big, big, big things from you. And I know that you're gonna do it. As you've heard before, you're definitely an advocate for our students and for our teachers and for the administration. And you, you did it at the balance. And so, at least this year, I don't have to worry about looking for my bowl to pick your name out of. I just had to say that. So, that, that brings us to your, your unexpired term that Ms. Simons has here in the Central District. So, let me just read some things to you about how we're gonna approach filling her seat. So, to fill Delegate-elect Ms. Simons' unexpired term in the Central District, the school board will appoint an interim member to serve through June 30th, 2020. We will accept applications for the upcoming vacancy. To be eligible for the appointment, citizens must be a qualified voter residing in the Central District of Newport News. Applications will begin, we will begin accepting those applications tomorrow, Wednesday, November 20th through Friday, December 6th, 2019. All interested parties may complete the online application on our website. Applications are also available here at the School Administration Building here on Warwick Boulevard. What will happen next, a list of all applications received will be posted online the week of December 9th. A public hearing will follow and will be held during our school board meeting on December 17th to gather input from those applicants or their supporters or whoever would like to come to the mic in support of that individual. The school board will then, we will review the applications. And then a few selected applicants will be interviewed. Not all, but a few selected applicants will be interviewed. We anticipate voting on the appointment during our January board meeting. So, again, more information about this process will be posted to our website. That's in inschools.org tomorrow. So, we look forward to receiving those applications. And understand, great things still are happening in Newport News. On October 18th, we had the stand night here at Todd Stadium. It was well attended. A big, big, big crowd came out. I believe it was a good football game. But thanks to all those parents and students who came out, it was probably one of the bigger crowds I've seen for stand. And so, great job. Again, on October 22nd, Delegate-elect Ms. Simons and I, we attended the ribbon cutting at the plumbing and pipe fitting lab at New Horizons. Again, standing room only. Phenomenal. I left there and then went to the Transportation Team's Appreciation Day. Was full of cheers. We had our own Mr. Rashad announcing folks and Mr., where did he go? Mr. Shea. And Mr. Shea, thank you. And then thank you for those who provided the, the vittles that we had thereafter. On October 24th, thanks again, you heard to the parents and the community leaders and the Huntington graduates who did come out in support of the Huntington Community Forum. We hear you. We hear you. And so, we'll take all the information that the school board has gathered. And we'll, we'll see what happens with that. On October 29th, many of us attended the 2019 State of the City Event, where our illustrious superintendent did an outstanding job. And a big thanks to the city manager and the mayor for involving, and not just the city speaking, but involve, involving several individuals. But the whole entire event was surrounded about education. Everyone out there was about education. We've heard from a individual who retired, I mean, not retired, but graduated from Achievable Dream. And when he was a young kid, said, "I wanted to go into the Navy. I wanted to be an electrical engineer." Guess what? He's in the Navy. He's an officer and he's an engineer. And we heard from a restaurant owner, entrepreneur here, who hired individuals. And now they've risen to be area managers. We've heard about, you know, I mean, we heard about, heard from Dr. Parker. We heard from Ms. Boykin.
One of our students.
From one of our students. Oh, wow. The student, what's her name? I can't remember the, yeah. But she did a phenomenal job. She actually heads up the robotic team. You know, Sarah? Yes, Sarah. She heads up the robotic team there at Heritage High School. Spoke elegantly, told her, and they did something with the police department about building and helping them with their robots and things that sort. So, the whole entire event was really based around education. Without education, we don't have a city. And without a city, we don't exist. So, again, thank you to the city manager, the city mayor for inclusiveness and education being at the top. And that said, again, a thank you to those at Achievable Dream. Again, another fantastic event. I believe I heard it was the largest tennis ball ever. And I saw enough people there, I believe. Very, very good turnout. And that being said, I think it's time for us to conclude our meeting. If there's no other comments, that being said, I will adjourn the meeting.